Regular meeting Windsor Heights City Council, come to order. Roll call.
Susan Skiries. Joseph Jones. Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones. And Teresa Harms.
Here.
Thank you. Please join me in pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Motion to approve the agenda?
I move second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo. Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is public forum. Time set aside for comments from the public on topics of city business not listed on the agenda. No action will be taken. Come to the podium, state your name, address, and keep your comments pleased to know more in five minutes.
Hi, I'm Dan Gredebeck. I live at the corner of 64th and University. When they redid the sidewalks on 64th Street, I have a son who is disabled. And they put in a driveway with a slope of 26 degrees. The limit is supposed to be 15 degrees is considered deadly. And it was supposed to be fixed when the university project was going to be put up. And it has not been fixed, nor do I believe that it is going to be fixed. And it's been like that for four years. So I didn't want, and in 90, what was, not 90, but 19, 19, 2019, the council said that you'd take care of it. So I guess, what is your plan?
You'd like to handle a lot?
Yeah, we've had a lot of communication with Mr. Gredebeck. We've had two engineering firms go out and review the ADA requirements in that area. And the only area that both engineering firms identified as not adhering to ADA standards was the landing area, the corner of 64th Street and University. And that was planned for being redone with the university project. The issue with the driveway, a driveway is not a path of travel. It is a path for a vehicle. So it is not subject to ADA requirements. The part of the driveway that is subject to the ADA requirements is the pedestrian sidewalk that crosses from one side to the other. And both engineering firms have confirmed that that does meet ADA requirements. So if the council would like for the staff to do another report and look into this further, we'd be glad to and provide that for you at the next council meeting.
Yes, we have two architect firms that have already...
Two engineering firms. Boltman Mink, who did the original design back when that project was done, did another review for me, and they confirmed that everything was hunky dory. So, and that's an engineering firm, hunky dory. And so considering that they did the original design, I wanted to make sure that a third party looked at it too. So we had a third-party engineering firm do that. And those results were completed and confirmed that everything met standards except for the landing area at the corner.
So what would we do to have just another one done?
I agree with that statement, that we've looked at this considerably. And there is nothing to be done to meet any ADA requirements addressing this except for the landing, which we plan to do with this project.
So what changed between when, before the sidewalk went through? What changed to make this become an issue?
It was an issue when it was first put in. I mean, we can't get rats in there, we can't get people to help my son who is an ADA.
I meant from prior to, like what, what do you feel is the, is just the sidewalk that comes through that is the problem, that's what created the problem? Or kind of what changed with that little area there? Just the sidewalk going through?
When the sidewalk went in, they changed the slope of the driveway. Okay. But that's not all that is missing. That, first of all, the slope is greater than eight degrees, which wasn't mentioned on any of the reports. It also didn't mention that there's more than 30 feet between platens, which means it has to go too wide. And there should be benches every 30 feet going by ADA.
Let me ask you, the slope you're talking about is that from the sidewalk or from the driveway?
All right, all right. The sidewalk slope is somewhere between seven and eight. And it's not supposed to be greater than five. The maximum speed of a wheelchair is not supposed to be greater than five miles an hour on a slope of five. It's on a slope of eight, and it's over seven and a half miles an hour in that zone. Because of the elevation.
So we have conflict in...
There was never in the engineering.
Was that in the engineering, was that something? I can't remember. I mean, I know I read it because I ask questions about it.
Yes, so I think what Mr. Gredebeck is speaking to is the point from the driveway down, the rest of the roadway, down to the corner?
That is the slope of...
So ADA requires that that slope match the adjacent roadway. You can imagine if you have a roadway that's going up a very steep hill, there's no way to change the sidewalk and make that some type of different slope. So as long as you're matching the sidewalk with that roadway sidewalk that's adjacent, then you're meeting their standard. Justin's here, he did part of the, so Justin, if I'm saying something out of school, jump in and say, Dennis, now you got that wrong, but...
I think, yeah, we can't change the rate of the road. If we get up to 2% over the road, great.
And then the issue about the benches, I haven't heard that one yet today. So that's a new one we have to look at, putting benches up on the sidewalk.
Well, you have to have places for people to sit and rest if you're not going to go to 30 feet. They're supposed to be level.
Yeah, and Dan, I don't know about that. So I have to take a look at that.
And it's, the grade between the sidewalk and 64th Street is over between 15 and 12, a slope 15 and 12.
So Dennis, it looks like Justin will be figuring it out about the benches?
Well, I'll be looking into it.
You want to find out?
Yeah, have a look.
And I think that probably should be looked at all along the university so that people that can walk can have a place to sit down and rest.
Yeah, we're spending quite a lot of money in the university project to add benches and sit-down areas. So we'll take a look and make sure that we're meeting all the ADA requirements for benches and resting.
And then now, I don't want to know how I can get a wheelchair up 4.2 feet to have access to the, what sidewalk?
Again, I don't know what that means, but I'd be glad to look at that.
There's a wall that was built?
The retaining wall along your property and the sidewalk.
Yes, and I'm supposed to have access to the sidewalk? And I don't have access anywhere but the driveway? So what you put in, is it deadly?
I don't, I don't agree with that, and the engineers don't agree with that as well. What was done was the driveway and the sidewalk were replaced after the last project. And the sidewalk was built to ADA standards. That's been confirmed by more than two, by two engineering firms. The driveway is not a place to be built to ADA standards for pedestrian travel. It's not a pedestrian path. It's a vehicle path. So that does not apply to ADA standards. The sidewalk grade down the roadway to the corner meets ADA requirements because it's adjacent to the slope of the roadway. You can't change the slope of the roadway. At the bottom, where there is a, what we call a landing area near the sidewalk going across the road, that panel for the landing area exceeded the 2% requirement by a couple of degrees. So we are going to tear that out and redo it so that it meets the two, the two-degree slope.
Dennis, I've invited you, I've invited other people to take a wheelchair right and tell me if it's safe. And everybody's refused for four years. I have spent $14,000 on property taxes, and you're blocking access to my son. That's a simple, what?
Mr. Gredebeck, I just want to interject. I don't know if you've ever personally asked me to come to your property.
I have not asked you.
Okay.
I have not asked most...
If I could, if I could just summarize what, what I understand the issue being. Your driveway becomes too steep a point for you to access the sidewalk. Is that what you're saying?
Yes, there's no way that my son can take the sidewalk or go onto the street to make it less.
Okay. The, the studies or the engineering results or whatever we like to call them, were you provided those?
I was provided them. The second one, I reviewed over and there was many errors in it. All right.
I just wanted to understand, you're mentioning slopes and degrees. I just want to understand, sort of, layman's terms, that, that is the issue you're referring to.
Well, the issue is that tipping over of a wheelchair.
Okay.
It's, it's a safety matter.
I understand.
And that's, I think, everybody's here wants to have safe streets. I mean, I don't, I mean, you guys spent a lot of money making our sidewalks better than what they were. So I have no problem with that. But I also don't want to have anybody injured because of that.
Can I understand one thing?
Go ahead.
Dennis, do you understand the retaining wall question? I guess I, I picture, okay. You want me to?
So next meeting, we'll have an answer?
I'll have an answer for the council for the benches issue. And I think that's about it.
So your plans are not to do anything from what I'm hearing?
That's correct. We are going to resolve the problem at the corner.
Okay, very good. Then I know where I need to go next.
Well, the council's asked me for some additional information before they could have more of a discussion about this. I have no authority to say yes or no to any of this. I just have to abide by the standards. And the bosses, my bosses are the council members. And if they choose to order the city administrator to go tear up your driveway and to rebuild it in some fashion that would allow you to go down to the street, then I'll do that. That's perfectly within the authority of the council to direct me. And I'm happy to do what they say.
Okay. So thank you for kind of your consideration.
Thank you.
Just a... I want to say, Vane, we had that driveway that was done on College that, that was hard to, you know, I'm talking about across from Craven's House on, what is that, Lewin Drive? What are they on, they're on College?
On College.
Yeah, College and, but anyway, it wasn't across the street from them that there's an issue about the driveway too because there's, there's a vehicle.
With the vehicle out.
Yeah, there was a disabled vehicle getting into, yes. We created that issue when we changed the grade of the roadway.
City's wall.
Well, it was part of the design for the engineering. We could not anticipate until we actually had the driveway in whether that vehicle was going to bottom out. So when we found that, the only real solution was to trade, change the grade of the driveway.
Did we do that?
Yes, and it worked out just fine.
Okay, great.
Now, if you want to go out and take a look at Mr. Gredebeck's property and to look at the roadway, the part that we're talking about, so everybody's clear, is from the sidewalk to the rope. That's the last part of that apron, that is the slope. The rest of it is, has nothing to do with the city because that's private property. We cannot do anything there. But it's that little section.
Okay, Dennis, certainly, I'm not an expert on this kind of thing. So I would rely on Justin and the other architects to determine that. But I was just curious about, we did the one, because essentially, we didn't compensate it for, and we should have.
It was an unforeseen issue. We could not, yeah, we could not.
Yeah, we're not looking to be quite blame, but, but different in this case.
It's different.
Okay, that's my point.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. One is, I'm fascinated now to find out, so when, who discovered the 2% difference in the landing? And when was that discovered?
When Boltman Mink and when, who was the other?
Kirk and Michael.
When Kirk and Michael did their review, they identified that as a place that would be redone.
So both engineering firms? Okay. Because I know that this is not the first time that we've heard this issue. So I'm fascinated that now it's 2% grade difference. And so this had been brought up before. So I'm curious as to why, why now it's being recognized that there's a 2% grade difference as opposed to when it was brought up previously?
It's a character flaw that I have, that when people say that the problem with somebody, something, I like to get the experts involved, have them do an official analysis of what things are. So then things get discovered. So for example, Councilmember LaFredo's been asking me about speed bumps on 69th Street. And I think the appropriate action there, I'm not trying to group all these together, it's just kind of a standard procedure that I like to follow. So we need to have an engineering company say, we've looked at the traffic counts on that street, and here's what we think the impact of doing, what do you call it, traffic? Speed bumps.
Traffic.
So those are two examples. And I think that it's appropriate for our government to be transparent and to use experts whenever questions like this come up. And in this case, I think we went even the extra mile to get the third opinion, the second engineering firm. And it's appropriate to confirm the data that we have available for us.
No, I'm not questioning that. I'm all, no, 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 that's not, no, not, that's not at all my question.
It's money well spent in my mind.
No, that, I'm grateful that you did that. That's not my question, that's not my concern. My concern is, is why is it, why, why wasn't this discovered when this issue first arose? Why has it taken years to result, to basically figure out that this is 2% increase and more than it should be when this question has been asked previously? I guess that's my question, I guess particularly to Boltman Mink. Why are we now just discovering this as opposed to when it was previously asked?
Well, I think that, not to speak for Justin, but I want to get the vernacular right. It's not a 2% difference. It's like the threshold's 2%, and the engineers found it was like 2.4%. So we are going to go in and correct for that half a percent, basically. So it's within, it's within an engineer's acceptable difference or error, plus or minus. But I'm not willing to accept that error when we have our crews out there redoing the sidewalk anyway. We might as well do it perfectly right. Because I do feel for Mr. Gredebeck, and I do feel for his son. And if they are having an issue with, you know, accessing a disabled vehicle or a ramp or anything like that, I want to do everything that we can to make that work for him. At the same time, I have to also look out for the taxpayers and the fairness to everybody else in this community. And just going around and fixing everybody's driveway problems because they want it fixed is not something that I would recommend either.
No, I appreciate that. I guess I just, my question specifically was why today as opposed to when the question was asked before? So that question really is for Boltman and Mink. Why are we now just discovering this?
What happens a lot with these is that, say, on this, you know, a half percent is a quarter of an inch. So free stall over the years can move it up and down, you know, afterwards. So it happens quite often when you're, so you put it in and meet us, meet us back. And then Mother Nature comes and decides to change it after that. And some areas, quite frankly, we can't make it meet because of just the terrain-wise. So we have to write some sort of exception on some...
Settles, maybe?
Yeah, settles or heaves up, one of the two, you know, you never, you know, frosty happens with just your streets sometimes, so.
Okay, all right, fair enough, thank you.
I know, but I'm just giving a general, a general thing of what happens when things happen over the years, so.
My second question then would be, I just want to make sure that I understand this. So there was never a change to the grade of the driveway? That we were, that we created?
That was created when the sidewalks went in before, we didn't have the problem.
And that's where I was going with it, and I probably didn't ask the question as well as you did.
Yeah, yes. So the driveway was fine before the sidewalks went in. The sidewalks, then, they had a level spot. And when they made it level, then it shortened up the, the slope to the...
Okay. All right, thank you. I'll, I'd like to find a time to come out and, and Dan, say your property, if you don't mind.
It's not a problem. I'll give you my home number.
Great, thank you.
I'll even give you a wheelchair to test it out if you want.
I look forward to it.
I did bring this up in one of my remarks, you know, so this did get brought, I did ask questions. I can't really remember the outcome. I didn't, I don't have my notes on that one, on what, what we talked about. But I did bring up the whole engineering question and kind of ask what was going on.
This is not the first time we, we've had this conversation, so, okay.
I have a question for you, Dennis, or a comment. I didn't ask for speed bumps. I'm not asking for speed bumps. I'm asking for an island in the street, much like they have to call them traffic. So I'm not talking about speed bumps. Yeah, that's number one. But probably other driveways over time, and new streets being put in, and sidewalks being put in, and so forth, if a handicapped individual moved in, how would they know to contact us or what to do? You know, I'm saying, because the driveway, they're purchasing the driveway as well as the house. You see what I'm saying? Okay.
Well, but they're not new to this.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying that. I'm saying, how many other cases are there that may have that same problem? They were in the, or they were in the house, and then the sidewalks were built, the street was redone, or whatever. I don't mean just on 64th. You can't answer that.
I can't, but I venture to say that any disabled person that lives in the house is going to have challenges that must be met. I think that's just going to happen.
Yeah, that's true.
And we have to do our best to try to make it as fast as possible for everybody.
I'm in, that's right.
Any further power or discussion? Next item is consent agenda, move to approve.
Go ahead.
Roll call.
Susan Skiries.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of the Third Amendment to land purchase agreement, Casey's Marketing Company.
Go ahead.
Any discussion?
Well, another question I have with that one is going on an awfully long time. I mean, is there more to change that they're looking for with the point of view or planning zoning? Or is, we have the final thing to approve?
No, we don't. In fact, we have been working with them as best we can. In fact, I will say, not best we can, but our engineering firm is going above and beyond what we should be doing to assist Casey's in trying to find a solution here. It is not the city's responsibility to engineer a project for a property owner like this. With that being said, our last meeting with them, as I detailed to the council, was resulted in Casey's promising to come back with a proposed solution for the access early last week, and we haven't heard from them. So no, we do not have anything.
So what are we approving then?
We're approving an extension of the purchase agreement to October 15th, which I guarantee you, we will not need.
Yeah, why do we keep on doing that?
And even though I brought this to light with Casey's more than one time, they have insisted that this is the extension they want the council to consider this evening. I propose that they actually change the date to the middle of November to give them time to get their site plan done, get it submitted to this planning and zoning, and get that approved, and then get that in front of the council for final approval of the site plan before this last extension expires. But this is not the, this is the one they want. I also asked Casey's to incorporate some monetary penalties if they did not meet their deadlines, just like the church has done. The church, last time they had an extension, included $20,000 in added financial penalties, which they now have collected 100% without any tie to the purchase price. And they've also been negotiating with Casey's another extension that would, would call for another $10,000 in penalties to be incorporated. So this is a really, just whatever Casey's wants, it's not going to work. It's just going to extend it for another, what, three weeks? And then the council's going to be back with another extension.
Should we include a penalty?
I asked them for that negative one.
Of course. But the church got the penalty.
I asked for a measly $5,000. That would be split over two times. So if they didn't meet their October 15th date, the city would reclaim the $2,500 of that $5,000. And then if they didn't meet their November 15th date, then the entire $5,000 will be forfeit to the city.
I mean, essentially, we could stop the whole thing.
You could just vote not to extend this, and the deal is dead tonight.
Yeah, that's, that's, so, I mean, I don't know if they would do a measly five grand, but anyway.
Mr. LaFredo, I'm at my wit's end with some of this as well.
I bet you are, I bet you are. And Dennis, is that?
Let me just point out one thing that I think you might be interested in this evening. The, a site plan like this hinges upon its traffic study. And so I can contrast that to another project that we're currently working with, with Aldi's. And when Aldi's meets with Dalton and his team about this pre-site plan discussion, and Dalton and his team say the first thing you have to do is a traffic study, they write it down, and they already have it to us. We have it done within 30 days, 60 days. The city told Casey's in December of 2019 that they needed to do a traffic study. After I joined the city in September 2020, we had a meeting in December with the Casey's team. And I, again, reiterated to them that they had to do a traffic study. I wrote it to them in an email in January 2021. The city received the traffic study at the beginning of August 2021. So it was a full 19 months that they delayed providing a traffic study. And our assumption was that they didn't want us to see the data that would show that they had to do a write-in, write-out on 63rd. And also that the conflict with traffic at the 63rd Street driveway was going to be very problematic. So we sit today, talking about solutions to the very problematic access on 63rd Street. Our engineers are spending extra time that we are paying for to help them deliver a solution. And now we're also waiting, more than a week after they said they were going to have a solution. So it's very frustrating. And I'm trying to be as open as I can with you about the problems that are facing the city. But also that your action tonight is not going to make a difference because it's still going to be expired in October, unless we do approve it.
One thing that, that really angers me, and I can tell it, you're frustrated at least, maybe not angry, but frustrated at least, is that why are we paying for the engineering people on the entrance and exit bill? That's, that's BS, I mean, in my opinion. That's crap. Because it's their thing. Did they already buy the property?
We have a purchase agreement that's continuing to count them getting their approvals.
Okay, so they haven't bought it yet?
No.
Okay, so deadlines, we did that, a smaller piece of property with, on 66th Street and University, because the developer continued to ask for extensions. That went on for a couple of years, I think. And, and nothing happened. Well, finally, we wouldn't, we, we wouldn't extend it. And, and so, I mean, I think Casey's is a great addition. I think that they will really develop that and probably have other stores in there too. But I, I, that just, that's not tolerable. That's not acceptable to me, to spend taxpayers' money to do engineering on our dime, taxpayers' dime, to have you do that.
Were you able to recoup any of that money somehow?
Well, I tried to do that with those penalties idea. The whole concept behind, behind having the penalties put into the extension was that we have far outspent any of the fees that we would be receiving as part of the site plan review process. And if we can, you know, ensure that if we go another 30, 60 days waiting for Casey's to get their site plan review in place, we at least would have $5,000 more than nothing today.
Do we have any idea how much we've spent over in engineering fees?
No, I don't know. Well, engineering, engineering fees right now are probably a small amount compared to staff resources that we put towards this. I mean, Dalton's probably spending a good couple of days a week just responding to whatever Casey's inquiries are. So, you know, we're way beyond that at this point.
I mean, Casey's is a big business concern. I mean, this is not, nothing for them, but it is something for us.
So what are our options?
Well, I mean, I think, I'm saying, I'm thinking through what you could do. I mean, it's one of those where, I mean, I've been included in some of this correspondence as part of some of the, but it's one where you kind of hate to kill the deal for the church, right? And it's, you know, if you can get a good developer in there and get the property on tax rules, that's great for everyone.
Yeah.
So you don't want to do that. But I think you're have, you're sitting in an opportunity where you can send a message that you're going to approve this, but the council will expect to receive a fee if there's another extension that's requested. And at least then you're, you're directing, Dennis, that I can put this in front of the council again, but I'm telling you, I don't think it's going to be approved without, without some fees. So I think you're, you're sitting here in a position where you could at least give that direction.
We should do it right now, couldn't we? On disagreement, modify it, same way. On disagreement, modify it, same we need to have retained now.
You could, what's the deadline of the agreement currently?
October fifteenth. We're expired now.
You're already expired.
We work on an extension that would expire on October fifteenth.
Okay, so we work in now, Aaron, legally, but on October fifteenth, if they want to extend it, there is a penalty.
I think you could send the message that if there, you guys will be approving this extension, but if you're asked for an additional extension, there will be a penalty.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Yeah. I mean, you could ask for that now, when you get that direction now. I don't know, it sounds like they're not receptive to that, but.
And I think that's fine, you know, 'cause we got a month till October fifteenth.
Right.
And I think if it goes beyond that, again, I'm going back to the Kessler thing.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, 'cause they can hold it from nothing, basically, you know, so, and tie it up. So, I think the next go-around, Dennis, my belief is, and the council says, is that there will be a money upfront for the time that we're using and our resources that we're using.
So, if I had to rephrase that, the council has approved this extension to October fifteenth, but they have stated without equivocation that if they're asked to consider another extension, it will include financial penalties for not meeting those requirements.
Yes, I think that, that's, that's just my opinion, I have.
We're already irritated because if it wasn't for the church, would we be continuing to entertain this?
We wouldn't, not right.
I think that's a no for me, so. Well, I might be able to share a little bit more.
If it wasn't for the church.
Oh, okay.
But it is for the church, so I will continue to grant and air this.
But we're all the same.
So, if I might share some more information. Every time we do something on this project, I share it with the church. I meet with Dwight and Ron and talk to them, and I've included the mayor at the early stages. He introduced me to many of the people there at the church. So, I've had meetings and email communication with them every step of the way. And they're very comfortable with us not approving an extension. Because they understand and they, they think that's a reasonable position for the city to have right now. And they also share their stories that they are not happy with Casey's, they are, that's why they put the money in, right? So, they're very unhappy with the way Casey's has been dealing with this too. I recognize very early on that if the city isn't doing everything it can to move this forward, the group that's hurt the most is the church. And if I was the church and I found out that the city was just sitting on, you know, review every two weeks and not doing their job, I'd be very upset. So, I, and Dalton established this very early on that every time Casey submitted something, he dropped everything and staff got energized and got into that and responded to Casey's within a couple of days. And I'm very proud to say we've done that all the way along, so.
But the church is getting fed up too, is right?
But not with the city. In fact, they're very comfortable and happy with the city doing what the city's doing and being very communicative with their real estate group.
Here's another suggestion from me. Let's make that deadline instead of the fifteenth of October, just, just let them know that we're just not pushovers, October tenth.
Well, they created this extension request, so you have to, you have to.
We can modify it.
If you modify it, then I'm gonna go back to them and have to beg for them to.
Okay, okay.
So, I'd say five days is gonna make it, they're not, I'm telling you right now, they're not gonna meet October.
Okay, but I just wanted to know that that's the case, you know, particularly if the church is in support of that, so.
They're in support of everything we've done to this point.
Okay, I would be, Dennis, perhaps in your role to make that clear to Casey's.
I'd love to.
Okay, that, that, that the count, at least one council member is not gonna support any further extensions. And unless there's some contingency plan.
Okay.
That just made, that just made.
No, at our last virtual meeting with Casey's, they brought their attorney. We haven't had attorneys involved in any of this site plan stuff until that time, and their attorney took, what, five, ten minutes of just screaming at us?
He's unannounced as well, which is worth.
Screaming about what?
All of this, screaming about everything. I think the common thing was, we're all in this together and we need to do what they want, so.
That's just, because.
I can't believe the phrase that I can't live.
I mean, to me, that's a very desirable, desirable piece of property.
It has its challenges, I mean, obviously, it has an access issue, but what we're talking about is the difference in a gas station use, which has a certain traffic pattern and a certain number of vehicles per hour that we expect. And if you compare that to other possible uses, like a residential use or even making it a public park or making it a public facility, we could use it to move public works out of the floodplain, who knows? There are just other possibilities and uses that we could do that have a much less intense traffic requirement.
And you know, put in several gas tanks, underground gas tanks, I mean, that's.
What's the community able to be dealing with in twenty or thirty years?
Yeah, so, knowing those things, and I do think Casey's would be an excellent addition. I'm not questioning that, I'm, I think they do a great job, but I think it's kind of stiffening our backs a little bit here. And, and I don't give a damn what that attorney says, I wouldn't view it or not, but.
For sure.
I mean.
What about this attorney?
It's like multiple attorneys out there, right?
Yeah, I mean.
You're getting into scary waters, Mike.
The point is, don't get, you don't need to take that crap from the attorneys.
Okay, one more time.
What do you mean, one more time?
Do we need to modify our motion then?
I would recommend that you approve.
No, I would modify it.
I would recommend you approve the extension with the message to me to do what you've said you can't do, and that's good enough.
Okay, all right.
Any further discussion?
So, just one last question, I have, I don't think Casey's has been here ever, right, before council?
No.
And nothing for economic development committee either.
Nope.
Good, we, I mean, we've been part of the, I mean, in the past when others have presented or they've been here at these meetings for these decisions, our meetings are open back to the public again. I guess I'm a little disappointed that they haven't made an initiative to come to our meetings where other facility, I mean, Hy-Vee's been here, QuickTrip's been here, Come and Go's been here, other.
I've been fresh.
All, I mean, so, I'm, I guess I'm a little disappointed, so maybe that could be part of our message as well, that it would be appropriate for them to come so that they could answer the council's questions.
Good, I'll add that to the message. Do you have questions for him? I don't have any questions for him, really.
Well, no, you have statements though, right? You can make them all here.
Yeah, yeah, statements.
Obviously, I do.
There's a message, you have a question, why is it?
I think if you get to October fifteenth and that date comes and goes and they have not fulfilled their commitments in this purchase agreement, I think their council will have quite a few questions.
I got quite a few statements.
You're right, all right.
That's kind of where I am with it. What type of, of a business concern are you when you're playing these games? And he may not like that, but I don't care. I mean, what's the matter with me?
Okay.
I don't want for Casey's.
I think we've given a direction to administrators, so roll call.
Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Next item is consideration memorandum of understanding for Central Iowa code construction.
We'll take a break. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harms.
Yes.
Next item is consideration resolution twenty twenty-one thirty-five, resolution by Windsor Heights City Council requesting an amendment to Polk County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan.
We'll take a break.
Discussion?
I have a couple of questions. So, I see that this is, so, two things, what role, what role do we have in the Polk County multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation, like, do we, do we play a role, do we have a seat at the table? What's our role in that?
Roll. So, Chief Azar, rep for the Polk County ELC, I'd like for you in that.
It, the hazard mitigation plan goes before the emergency management commission for approval. And before that, because this would be an amendment, it would go before the emergency management executive committee, and I sit on that executive committee as well. So, the hazard mitigation plan is a, a large document that's updated every five years by the county and just simply lists out what the, the goals are for hazard mitigation among all the communities within Polk County. But in this instance in particular, correct me if I'm wrong, Dalton, but this relates back to a grant opportunity. And if we don't have this specific item listed in that hazard mitigation plan, then that makes the grant opportunity a little more challenging. So, it fits within the hazard mitigation plan umbrella. It's something that, you know, would normally be in that, so it's not abnormal.
Chad, is this part of the capital crossroads I'm due?
No.
It's a separate, you know, shift, right?
Yeah.
So, just to clarify, this is, this is an amendment to the existing plan, because the existing plan won't be updated for a couple of years, but when that whole process starts, the council is very engaged, there's public input meetings, they come and present to you guys. And then the plan has to be approved by resolution by each governing body. But like Chad said, in order to get grant funding or even be considered, or for them even receive our notice of interest for grant funding, this has to be on file.
So, this is Polk County?
Yes, yep.
Right, so there's several cities then?
Yeah, yeah, maybe the nineteen.
That's kind of nice.
But there, there's one large umbrella hazard mitigation plan that we've decided we have to build around.
Consistent, yeah, that makes sense.
Any further discussion?
Yes. Go ahead, Jason, go ahead. Okay, so, I just, I, I, this was a little bit of a surprise to me, the first time I, I heard that this was in here. I know a little bit about the plan, but, so, it's not a, a secret that we've had this conversation about real. So, my question was, is, did this come from then the public works committee as a recommendation, or?
No.
I, okay, thank you. And then, I understand that it needs to be in here for consideration for grants and all those sorts of things, but once it's here, then it's like expected to be part of our plan. And that's a little bit of my concern, is that we haven't, as a council, made a decision as to whether or not this is a direction that we're interested in actually going or not. I know that it's been a conversation, so I just, I, I'm okay putting it in here for consideration, but I guess I have, because I'm all for trying to get more resources for our community to help with these sorts of things and try to figure them out. I guess I just, I want it to, you know, for there to be on the record, I guess, for saying that I'm not necessarily supportive of this component being as is reflected here. So, I'm just, I want that to be recorded, I guess, more than anything else, so.
And that was, that was my concern as well, reading this, you know, I kind of was a little bit confused by reading this and then not being able to read some of it that goes through because of how the copying went, kind of was a little bit, well, now what are we doing?
Susan, do you want to?
Well, I, I mean, I don't, as long as it's written down, as Teresa said, I'm, I'm happy with trying to get as much grants or money as we can to help things out, but I do want it noted that this is not, we have not discussed this. This is not something that, as a council, we've decided in any way, shape, or form. And then, I guess, I don't even know what we are changing as far as amendments, like, really, what do you like? Well, adding, so it's, I.
For the record, Teresa, what is the component that you're referring to?
Well, so I mean, as far as relocating the, the facilities, we haven't made a decision about that. So, it says it's a high priority, I appreciate that, I know that we have to do something. We're still waiting for our flood plan to come back. And so, but we're putting this in, this plan, before we even know what our options are, and so, it just seems, I don't like that. I don't like that this is because I found, just like, there's other things that are in plans, everybody thinks you're doing them, right? And then, then there's this mission to go get them done, even though we haven't made a decision to actually do them. And so, that's my only concern, I will support this tonight, I just want it to be on the record that I don't know that this is the direction that we're going.
Teresa, can I just add to that?
You can add to it.
I don't disagree with, with you at all, I don't think we have to agree to it tonight. Maybe we need to find out a little more, like Susan said, the, the copy isn't very clear either, you know, on some of this stuff, so. Maybe we need to have a little more of a presentation of what this, what the effect is, so.
That's fair.
I don't think we want to just agree to something and not, or even consider it, vote to consider it if we don't understand, you know, fully, how, how it would come together.
Dennis, is there a timeline on this? Like, that this is like, the deadline is tomorrow?
It's not that, it's not that quick, but Dalton, do they have a schedule here for getting every, all the governing bodies on, on board?
So, the next executive, executive committee meeting is November twenty-second, it's the end of November. So, I have not submitted a notice of intent on any of these, this stuff. And I didn't want to do that until after today, in case the conversation went like this, oh, yeah, no.
Well, we certainly appreciate everybody's comments, because our, our charge is to come up with these projects or programs or recommendations, and then it's the council's purview to decide what to do with it. The council could say, and I have expected it, we'd like the public works committee to look, look at this and come back with some counsel or advice. The, the council can approve this tonight with the exact wording that Teresa has been saying and Susan's been saying, because really, all we want to do is get this in so we can be eligible for the grants. We think that a work session would be appropriate to talk about this stuff going forward. We think that this is going to be, there are gonna be many different decision points along the line for the council to say yes or no, we don't want to do that, we're not interested in that. At the very least, if there is a grant awarded to us for something, the council could say, no, thank you, we don't want to accept that grant, because we don't want to devote a million dollars towards this project out of tax dollars. So, there are gonna be ample opportunities for the council to stop or go on any of these projects that come up. But right now, we just wanted to get in the queue so we'd be eligible for grant money. And I think that's the very first step in any of this stuff, but I certainly understand and expected all this conversation.
So, now, since it says relocate operational and/or critical facilities out of the floodplain, if we just, if we happen to say, okay, well, we don't want to relocate, but we want to tighten things up there, would that be covered under this, under the grant? Would that be in this, or would that not be included in? I mean, it's kind of, is this a wide spectrum of possibilities, or?
So, that would be covered under, floodproofing a building would be covered under Windsor Heights action item number seven. And I actually worked with Iowa Department of Homeland Security and Emergency Management to put this together specifically for that reason, so we didn't kind of paint ourselves into a corner. They specifically said to put that program as an action item, because it qualifies for a different pot of money from the federal government, property acquisition. And so, that's, that's kind of how we broke it out. To get back to your question, the, the deadline for the application on these to the state is December fifteenth. I need to submit a notice of intent whenever I think we're comfortable with this. And so, between when I submit the notice of intent to when the application is due, there's, there's a pretty substantial amount of work. And so, certainly can hold these work groups and stuff, just know that it is pushing the clock a little bit, you know, that's all right.
But to qualify Dalton's, he's talking about applying for grant money in this grant window. So, if we miss this window, we can get our ducks in a row slowly and apply for grant money next December, as long as we have done this. So, the council can take as long as it wants, we just wanted to get in for this cycle, because our experience typically has been, you don't get money the first go-around, you kind of test the waters, you find out what in your grant application did work or didn't work, and that learning experience helps you prepare for the next grant application. So, we wanted to get in for December.
That helps, yeah. This needs clarity and.
And we'll work on these copies going forward, I see what you're saying.
So, is this something that we should send to a public works committee, or is this really, is, I don't want to waste public works committee time either, you know? This is, I, I don't really know how much.
Well, this doesn't handcuff us, or, you know, you know, so.
Let's see, see what the concern is, if it's being.
Yeah.
Handcuffed in any way, so, I just think if there needs to be some changes to language, like, use the word possibly, I don't know. Keep in mind that, sorry, just to add, add to that, that a little bit, the hazard mitigation plan is a living breath.
Keep in mind that, sorry, just to add, add to that, that a little bit, the hazard mitigation plan is a living, breathing document. And so we do update it, we change things, you know, some stuff just stays on there because we either don't have the funding to do it, or we don't know what we're going to do yet. You know, so that document, and one of the things they expressed to us when we went through the, the update in twenty, what did I tell you, nineteen?
Nineteen, when we first started, yeah.
Yeah, Allison, who's on the Public Safety Committee is actually the one that helped facilitate the update. But one of the things we talked about then was, you know, just because we have something listed on there, doesn't mean that, that the city's locked into, they have to do something with this now. It could be something that carries on for a while, or maybe that falls off because it becomes a low priority and something else comes on, so.
So this opens the possibilities for us.
In the grant funding area, yes.
Yeah, that's what I'm trying to say.
And like I said, I'm, I'm not opposed to these being in there, I'm not opposed to that, I just want to be, for me more than anything else, I just want to be on the record for not suggesting that I support relocating the public. I mean, we, I don't know, and I don't want to answer that question until we get our flood report. And we can then make decisions based on the information that's available to us instead of guessing today that we're going to relocate based on somebody's wish list item. And so, so can I then assume that flood resilience improvements in the Polby Park neighborhood means everything in this place, including the residential properties?
Yes, we have that.
So, and then I'm comfortable with, I'm, I'm comfortable with it, I, I understand, but I just, again, I just want it to be known that, that this isn't a directive, that this is the direction we're going. That's, that's not how I think, yeah.
I think it's important that we get updated information as council does on the flood mitigation plan. Because there's got to have been updates as long as it's been going on now.
You've sent some out, haven't you?
Yeah, and we have the final open house coming up, and when they have that open house done, then they're going to be finishing up the draft of their analysis, and then that'll be presented to the council.
They'll, they'll do a reservation.
And to go on record, Teresa said this evening, I guarantee you, we will not come to you with a project and say to you, well, you approved this back in, uh, September, so why aren't you approving it now? I guarantee you that.
Good, Dennis, we've seen the first time.
And that's on the camera, that's on the camera.
Maybe it's last word.
Any further discussion? Roll call.
Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Mike Lefredo.
Yes.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
I will have a note on there that the plant elements, amendments have not been fully considered by the council.
Next item is consideration of flood insurance renewal.
Which recommendation, which, which option?
Option A.
We're recommending that it stay with the same coverage. I just wanted to say, this is kind of a nostalgic issue for me because I can remember barely being here at the city of Windsor Heights when this issue was brought before the council to purchase flood insurance for the C E C. Seems like it was just two days ago. So we're recommending to stay with the current coverage on flood insurance, and that's at a cost of fifteen thousand nine fifty, and that's up from fifteen one eighty-three that we're currently at, what we're paying last year.
Any further discussion?
I'm surprised they didn't go up more than that.
Did you have a second on that?
I have, Susan.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration pay request number fourteen, College Drive Improvement Project in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred and seven dollars in miscellaneous cents. Discussion?
So just a quick question, I see that the Maxwell's House, so the corner of Seventy-Eighth and College, still has like the, um, whatever.
That sock, yeah.
Yeah, the sock, thank you, what's going on there, because that.
They have to break up some rock and stuff, we had a little health issues last week, so that's why they didn't work.
What's his first?
I think I've seen him.
They were there today.
Roger.
What is it?
Yes.
Roger, Roger and Buddy.
Yeah, yeah, David was a teacher of mine at Lincoln.
Oh, sure.
He's now the principal of Valley.
He sure is. Okay, so they're, they're still, and I've seen them out there.
They're working today again.
Yep, nope, I saw them, and, but I saw them out there last week too.
Every day, except for Thursday and Friday.
Okay. Well, I wasn't in town those days, so, but, okay, I was just, I know that there's, just still, you know, still concerns, but I know that, I see them out there working, so I appreciate that there's still.
Yeah, they're, they're, some, like I said, some health.
Okay, got it, thank you.
Issues last week, so.
Any further discussion on that? Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.
Next item is consideration of pay request number fifteen dash twenty twenty, Street Improvement Project, Ellison sixty ninth, in the amount of ten thousand two hundred and seven dollars and some cents.
Question, is, is that the last one?
I think so, yeah, we're probably just catching up on some quantities, so there might be a little bit here and there and get rid of retainage and.
Yeah, total goes up for us sometimes, those projects, we have, like, Ellison and College and those, what the total cost is.
Oh, it should, it should be in there with the packet, yeah.
It is, the total?
Yeah, yeah, so there's a, probably the second one that says work completed to date or something like that, so.
Okay, and is, that, so that includes your fees as well as?
No, no, so that's what you're asking, okay, I was just thinking.
That's part of the cost of the.
Sure, I was thinking, you're thinking construction.
Yes, I think that should be included.
Travis, did we get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Justin, real quick, on both of those streets, just thinking, so do you have a punch list, are we down to that space, is there like a punch list on each one of these?
Yeah, they've been doing them as we've been going, a lot of it's just those, seeing on those last couple of phases is really what's left.
All right.
There are some punch list items that they have here and there, but the final one won't be done till seeing's really done, but.
I was just curious, because I haven't heard a lot of complaints, so I did get some from somebody who complained about the rocks in their yard. Interesting what goes around, comes around, but.
Yeah, it's amazing how much rocks are pushed up over the winter, is what happens.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Anything to your group?
Nope, you're good.
Okay, now it's roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike Lefredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yep.
Next item is reports, Teresa?
Oh, a long one today, so Mac met, we can go Tuesday, we got an update on Bravo, I sent you guys an email with the presentation that was provided. Polk County gave an update on the COVID, continuing to do vaccine opportunities and be creative with that. In addition, they are, they have a mask requirement for Polk County buildings, again, to deal with the current uptick of, of COVID in the metro. And we're dealing, you know, they're dealing with a bunch of stuff from that space. And then the next meeting in October will have an update from Metro Waste in October, and that'll be an update on the new merch that's going out in the Grimes area. We had public safety last week as well, and so we got an update on the Westcom transition, Chad, how many days?
Less than forty hours.
Less than forty hours, I feel like this has just been such a long time coming. So very, Chad and his team are super excited, they're stoked, isn't that the right word?
It was periodic updates and elsewhere with that.
Will.
Yeah, thank you.
We also talked about animal trapping, that was an issue that was brought up by some public safety committee members, and we decided to take no action at this time. And then we also discussed birding regulations with the chimeneas and that sort of thing, and so we're going to continue to discuss and work on that issue at our, at our next meeting. Everybody should have received the, Dennis's performance evaluation that was compiled and distributed, and it came from A R N. And so we will bring that, I think, October eighteenth agenda, correct? All right, discuss the next two ones, we won't have everybody here. And then Tuesday, we're able, and Travis attended the Leaguer Cities Conference, and so great sessions and on a variety of topics, everything from budgeting to comp plan. Housing broadband, economic development laws, shared services, and then some real good networking opportunities. I do have some presentations, if anybody, or copies of the presentations that I went to, if anybody wants those, I'm happy to share them. Friday, I had a movie in the park, it was probably the best attended we've had so far, and so thanks to Dennis and Whitney, and Chad was out there. I'm not sure who was there from Public Works, but, and our public safety team, but for everybody that was out there, I think it was another great event. And I might recommend for us, when we bring our special events committee back together again, that maybe even doing more, transition to the, like, more in the fall, might be. I just feel like they're a little bit more attended, or better attended in the fall, I mean, we had that same thing last year as well, excuse me. And then thanks to the fire department, so I had a, some residents who came to my yard the other day, and they had their grandchildren in town, so they brought them over. They were looking for some cheap, not necessarily cheap entertainment, that wasn't what I, that's not what I meant by that, but they were trying to figure out how to entertain them. And so they thought, oh, let's take them to the fire department, so they came and knocked on the door, and they gave them a grand tour. And so thank you again to Chad and his team for always being so gracious to our residents, more than when I just bring my children and we drop off cookies. So anyways, I think that's, I think that's everything on my board, thank you.
Mike?
Bravo meets the twenty ninth, there's a social on twenty eighth, other than that, I don't know.
Mike?
Yeah, I've got a couple things to try to get on the Metro Waste Authority Facebook, or Zoomy, and it kept cutting out on me. I could see the people on there, but I couldn't get any sound, so, just like I wasn't there, so anyway, so I know that. The, the townhouse fires, I just go by, I drove through those yesterday, and, I mean, it, it devastated to see how they just burned out. It must, it must have been pretty easy to burn, you know what I'm saying?
Actually, it was just the opposite, yeah, if you go look, so keep in mind that when you have a fire that, that starts at two o'clock in the morning or two thirty in the morning. There's a couple of challenges, number one, people are usually asleep, and so that's a concern. But the other thing is, those fires have to get to an advanced stage before somebody notices them in the middle of night, and this is no different. But I've actually got a video of the first engine rolling in, and the, the north garage, two garages are already gone, and the front of the building's already on fire, just because of the advancement. But if you look at the building and really look at what's left of it, the roof is gone, but the firewalls between each, each living unit are still intact. And in fact, the crews were able to save the furthest south apartment from fire damage. The, the damage there is, is debris from the ceiling and, and water damage, but if you look, the paint color's still there, the stuff in the, the room's still intact. Matter of fact, there is a plastic, round plastic canister that held a ring that was not melted down when I was up there looking for some stuff for one of the residents. So to, actually, to my surprise, the, the units held up very, very well. But the, the size and significance of that fire, just because of the amount of time it took for somebody to notice it in the middle of night, was, was key.
Yeah, which is pretty awful looking, I mean, so, yeah, right, yeah, thanks for sharing that about how quickly it moved. Yeah, and I looked at the car burnt and, and the garage and the buildings there. So you, your fire people reacted very quickly, you know, when they go back.
Yeah, the, the engine, when they pulled out of the, out of the bay, they immediately called for a second alarm because they could see it from there. And then as I was backing out of my driveway, I called for the third alarm, just based on the radio traffic and, and thinking we still had to evacuate people. So like I said before, we're extremely fortunate to have the relationships we do with our partners. You know, we had three aerials and, I think, six engines, and twenty-six, twenty-seven people on scene for this, so.
And no one's critically injured, are they?
Nope.
That's great. Now, my other thing that I wanted to bring up and talk to Dennis briefly about it is not speed bumps, but on sixty ninth, I'm convinced, well, I had it on the agenda one time, and then I got it, I got a clue to the. Speed control with those islands in the middle of the street. And I would suggest, if I got on the agenda next time, I just, there's several in Des Moines, I mean, the last one I saw was on Grand Avenue, right by, right by Des Moines University. And so I, when I hadn't talked to a public safety Des Moines person, and he thought they were effective in terms of, because you have to slow down to go around. So my proposal would be on that agenda item, and I think, just need a second, and I think, sure, I can get one, is that. It'd be sixty ninth would be a pilot for this project, coming down off the Hill of Hickman, and it's true on Seventy, and, you know, sixty ninth probably to, to some extent. So anyway, I think it'd be worth a trial, because it's not, Dennis said we got, we didn't use all our money for the streets and stuff, right? We have some extra money in the, in the streets and that kind of thing, I think you reported on that, like, we spent like a million less.
Yeah, okay, this is the priority for the council, then we definitely reprogram that money.
Okay, well.
But I'm sticking with my recommendation that we do a traffic study first.
Okay, okay, well, I.
Could I recommend?
Okay, but I'm not there quite yet, let me finish, finish.
Do we have a discussion on the next?
Yeah, it's totally on the agenda next.
First recall me discussion?
We have it online.
Is that, Mike, what you're?
That's what I'm asking for, yeah, and, you know, as far as the traffic study, and do what you have to do, but it seems like, because cameras that Chad has up, tells you the amount of traffic that goes on those streets. So, I mean, it counts.
They count, but the problem is you're only counting one direction of traffic.
Right, yeah.
And, and I don't know that I would rely on them, a, a, a traffic study is going to give you a much better count than.
Yeah, sure, sure, I'm just, again, trying to be a conservative with regard to our taxpayer dollars, and so if it's needed, then we can do it.
For the purposes of the discussion, we'll bring that back out so you have an idea of that cost, but we'll also see if we can get our hand up and eye on what an estimate would be for a cost for a pilot program. So we'll call up Des Moines and see if we can get anything.
And I, I wonder, Dennis, if there was any grant money as a pilot program for the city? Because it's new force.
Yeah, I wonder too.
So, so perhaps, Dalton, you can check into that.
I think the M P O has spent money, I mean, so that would be, Joseph's not here, but that would be a place maybe, but also, Dennis, what, maybe look and see what was in our recommendations for comp plan? If there's any other, or when M P O have recommendations for street calming sorts of things, what, see if there's anything else out there in our previous plans that called for street calming. Because I feel like there are some other streets identified as potential, but I just can't remember off the top of my head.
Okay, we'll.
Yeah, my, my thinking is that it's, it's a trial, it's one that's a trial, and.
But I feel like I've had this conversation before.
But, but it, it would work elsewhere, but I, I was pretty optimistic after I talked to the, the public safety couple, and, and on Grand, because they, they tend to speed on Grand Avenue.
Maybe we can get us away from M P O and come to a, just go for it.
And they didn't have an incline, Grand didn't have, it was pretty flat. Okay, that's all I have, Susan.
Susan?
Teresa, Travis and I went to the Leaguer Cities and Port Ableton Network. I walked around Iowa River Landing for four hours, was quite the experience, I got to talk to a developer, and then also some business owners in the area. They really redeveloped Iowa River Landing, and it, it's actually really amazing there, I'm kind of jealous, not going to lie. So just kind of some names of people to maybe get in touch with, that we can talk about maybe at the Economic Development meeting, and that's on Thursday.
Susan, where was it that it redeveloped?
Corvus.
Corvus, yeah. Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's a great.
And they're still building lots and lots and lots.
When I was there in the seventies, Iowa City, there was nothing there, basically, Corvus.
And I was there five years ago, there wasn't their stuff, so.
Dennis?
Chad, could I ask Chad to give you an update on the fire? Because I think it's important for you to know what the status is of the investigation, but also, you know, people read in the news media that the ATF was there, and I want Chad to kind of tell you what the ATF was there, so you understand that this was not a drug investigation or a meth lab that went awry. And then also, we had somebody who started the fire department today?
Yeah, so I'll start with that. Captain Boyle, that was here at the last meeting, started today, and was thrown right into the mix. So I don't know whether anything else going on this week, then with the Fire Friday, it really created an issue with time and having any. So, but he's on board. As far as an update on the fire, the Fire Marshal's Office, I called them fairly early on to come assist with the investigation, simply because of the size of the loss with four living units, and then the fact that we had a couple injuries. It was just easier for us to have an outside agency, especially at the state level, with, with those resources come in and do that investigation. So I got a phone call back, not only did I get one State Fire Marshal, I got two, which surprised everybody. And then I got a text message a few minutes later saying, oh, we're bringing an ATF agent. As I tried to outline in the news release to keep anything from getting too out of control, because the media was, was involved with it, fire investigators have to maintain their certification, and by doing so, they have to have so many fires they investigate per year. And as you can imagine, ATF doesn't get a lot of local work. And so a lot of times, the ATF agents will roll out with the State Fire Marshal's Office to perform investigations so that they get their numbers. And it's no different than actually some of the smaller communities where their investigators may not be exposed to so many fires to investigate each year, so they have to go to another agency and piggyback on some of those to get those numbers. So I told the media that morning, when we were doing the news releases, that they were coming, that it wasn't a big deal, it's part of their certification efforts. I think we kept a pretty, pretty tight rein on it, I didn't hear too much excitement over it. But I, I figured as soon as a guy showed up and jumped out of his truck with an ATF shirt on, they're going to get questioned. So like I said, I, I addressed that with media on scene at the time, I addressed it with media in here Friday, and we put it in the news release to cover that as well. So as I alluded to earlier, the, the fire was so advanced, by the time we got the call, that the area of origin, there, there's just nothing there. And so in speaking with the Fire Marshal's Office today, and ten different investigators from all the different insurance companies are involved, it's probably going to wind up being undetermined for the cause. We're pretty sure it's unintentional or accidental, we don't have anything to, to lead us to believe that it was intentional. We've got a couple of ideas as to what may have started it, but because of the severity of the damage at the point of origin, we can't make an official call as to this, this started or that started it. So I would, I would expect it to be undetermined when we're all said and done. Just over half a million dollars loss on the building, and about another, between two hundred and seventy, three hundred thousand in content, so probably somewhere around a million dollar total loss. One injury was transported by EMS, and then moved to Iowa City Burn Unit. He had some burns on his upper extremities, but the hospital did not intubate him, which means they didn't put a tube and able to breathe for him. That's a positive thing, because if it was very severe, they would have done that. The other injury was minor burns to hands and a nose, and he took himself to the hospital later. So very fortunate with that time of day that, that we didn't have any more serious injuries or fatalities. And a huge shout out to Officer Davison and Officer Klingon, as well as the fire team, Foreman Jones and Fleming, for being able to get everybody out. There was six people in the north apartment, two in the second apartment, one in the next apartment, and the third, the last one was unoccupied at the time. So, and they were able to get all those people out.
Were there working smoke detectors?
There were. One of the things that came up with the media too, the fire originated in the garage, not in the building. And so the challenge, of course, with that is the smoke detectors are in the building, the fire's got to enter the building in order for them to go off. And so it, it traveled from the garages to the, the outside of the building to the inside of the building. But there were working smoke detectors. Matter of fact, when I was digging through the fourth apartment looking for some property, though, it was still saying fire, it's still going off. And that was at eleven o'clock in the morning, eight hours later, so.
Chad, are the garages are detached, or they?
They are.
So how did it get?
Well, there's, there's a couple ways it could do that. One is just simply thermal, those garages are not that far from the building, and when you get a, a good heavy fire load, they can just radiate heat. But the other thing is, those units all have a, a privacy fence, kind of, that goes from the garage to the building. And so the fire could also run that privacy fence and get up on there. As far as exactly how it did it, I can't tell you that. But there's, there's multiple paths for fire move from, from the garage to the, the main building.
Anything further?
That's it, thank you. Chad, thank you for the proactive communication. I hope we can, I mean, you did, you did great, thank you for being Johnny on the spot, as you always are. And I just hope we can continue with that with everything that we do, not just in Public Safety, so thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Susan Skiris.
Yes.
Mike LaFredo.
Yes.
Mike Jones.
Yes.
And Teresa Harns.
Yes.